Okay, I'll call the zoning board of examiners and appeals meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ron.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mrs. Aker.
Here.
Mr. Vig.
Here.
And Dean Kurtz and Ken Ayers are excused.
Okay, so if it's okay with the board, it was my thought to postpone item C2 until, move it to item I, so that we can get through the items for the folks here. If that's okay with everybody, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda with that change? It's been moved by Mr. Ron, been seconded by Ms. Dole. Okay, please vote. Okay, so that motion passes. Next on the agenda is item C1 disclosures. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, item B, the minutes of Thursday, March 12, 2015. Yes, there's been a motion by Mr. Vig, seconded by Ms. Aker. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Ms. Dole.
Just, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Dole.
Uh, yes, I noticed on page five, there was the word sway, which I thought should say, say, or saying. And on page seven, there was a reference to the year 2013 that I thought should be 2014. The one on page five is under Chair Carr's, it's the third line down. Where the first word on the third line under Chair Carr's, he stated that he did not find the comment by the petitioner swaying that the building permit had been issued. And I propose that that be changed to saying, and also on page seven, under Board Member Hart, and he could correct me if I'm wrong, but it refers to prior to 2013, when my memory says it would have been 2014, on page seven.
Any other corrections?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Dole, on the one that says swaying, it, the way Chair Carr's had mentioned it was that what they were saying didn't sway his decision, so that the building permit had been done. But we'll fix the 13, thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes? Okay, so without objection, the minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is item C1 disclosures. Any disclosures? Okay, if there's no disclosures, we'll move on to the consent agendas. There are motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Vig has moved, seconded by Ms. Dole. Do any items on the consent agenda need to be pulled? Without objection, the consent agenda items are approved.
Mr. Chair, you also needed to do disclosures, please.
I asked for disclosures and no one requested to speak.
Pardon me, thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is appearance request. There's none, item F and finished business, there's none. The regular agenda resolutions for approval, there are none, so the next is public hearings. So I'll read the order of business for public hearings. "The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the precedents to be followed. The variance case number and the number of the applicant shall," excuse me, "and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear the rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by ponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes, representatives of groups have five minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. Every final decision on the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." So case 2015-003. Will staff please present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the matter of case 2015-0033, on April 23, 2015, 93 public hearing notices were mailed. To date, 11 notices were returned unclaimed. There were no comments returned either in favor of or opposed to the request for the variance. This is a variance from AMC 2145-045G1 to allow a structure to encroach 10 and 1/2 feet into the 20-foot primary front yard setback in the R2M district. It should be noted that on July 14, 2005, the zoning board of examiners and appeals did approve a variance on this piece of property. At that time, it was to allow partial reconstruction of an existing non-conforming structure, and also to allow the structure to encroach approximately nine feet into the front yard setback. The reconstruction of the structure has been accomplished, however, in all the confusion that happened with that particular piece of property, the applicant forgot to record a notice of zoning action within one year. So the variance is back before the zoning board of examiners and appeals because of the failure to record the notice of zoning action. The property is lot 11A, block 40A, South Edition. It's located south of West 15th Avenue and east of East Street. I should note that there is a typographic error on page three, the first paragraph, under site description and proposal. It does state that the variance is to allow the structure to encroach 11 and 1/2 feet into the 20-foot front yard setback. That's an error. The variance request is actually 10 and 1/2 feet. This property is a corner lot. There was a yard determination made that the 20-foot primary front yard setback is measured from West 15th, that the secondary front yard setback is measured from East Street, and that side yard setbacks, five feet in depth, are measured from the south and east property boundaries. The single-family residential house was constructed on the lot in 1947. There are two sheds on the property, however, they do conform to Title 21 requirements. Variances are not required for either shed that are located in the side yard setback. The background to this variance was, in 2005, a drunk driver in a stolen vehicle was being pursued by police, traveling at a speed of 75 to 80 miles per hour. The driver lost control of the vehicle and crashed through the north end of the petitioner's house. I believe that there were, hopefully, color copies of the incident that were included in the packet that was distributed to the board members. The crash resulted in a loss of 275 square feet of the home, leaving only 900 square feet of living space for the home. So the demolished portion of the house has been rebuilt. It does not extend all the way to the sidewalk. The 100% encroachment into the primary front yard setback has been reduced to 53% encroachment. In reviewing the standards for granting the variance, all standards appear to have been met. In this case, the orientation of the lot in a north-south direction constitute the special circumstances. This lot and the lot adjoining the east property boundary are the only two lots within the block that have a north-south orientation. All other lots have east-west orientation, and they have their 20-foot front yard setback either on D Street or East Street. Second standard, in reviewing the aerial photographs, the partial reconstruction of the demolished portion of the living space resulted in a house that contains 1,062 square feet. However, it's much smaller in size, based on looking at aerial photos, that are smaller than other dwellings in the surrounding area, which tend to range from 1,600 to 3,500 square feet. So it could be deemed that denial of the variance would deny the property owner rights that are commonly enjoyed by other property owners in the same zoning district. The orientation of the lot and the determination of the primary front yard, secondary front yard setbacks are not the result of action by the petitioner. And there is sufficient separation distance between single-family dwelling on the petition site and the apartment building on the lot to the east to allow for fire separation, light, air, and open space. Granting the variance will not adversely affect the use of the adjacent property. Both uses are permitted uses in the R2M district. Both blocks are developed with permitted uses as well as the existing single-family residential use is permitted in the R2M. The request is dimensional only. The structure is comparable with the development that exists in the surrounding neighborhood, and this is the minimum variance required to allow the structure to remain in its current location. Therefore, the department does recommend approval subject to two conditions on page seven of the packet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before we do questions, I inadvertently skipped a step. Can we also hear the presentation of sufficiency of notice?
Mr. Chair, I did give the notice at the beginning of the presentation.
Okay, thank you, my apologies. Are there any questions for staff from the board? Hearing none, can the applicant step forward, please?
Good evening, my name is Ed Walden. I'm with Keller Williams Realty, and I'm representing M. Snyder, our client.
Can you spell your last name for the record, sir?
Sure, W.A.L.D.E.N.
Thank you.
And all the pertinent facts of this was explained thoroughly by your team, and we just want to go over a couple of points. We, in the submission and the cover letter, explained that this was, this entire process was done in 2005, with the exception of an oversight. We mistakenly forgot to have the variance properly recorded in the end, within the one-year time period. Since that time has been done, tailored restoration, Ms. Snyder followed every specific requirement laid out by the municipality, and had Taylor Restoration come in and do the work. And since then, it's been nine years. There was one person on the municipal board, at the zoning board at that time, that thought it may be a safety concern, but in the nine years since, we hadn't had any safety concerns in that area. If you've seen the after pictures of that, or have been by the property, it's a very nice little property, and it's located and very well taken care of. It seems to fit all the requirements at this point. We request that it be approved. Is there any questions that I can answer at this point? We've pretty much provided everything in the package, including after the Aswell survey, a recent Aswell survey, and pictures of the property. Then we just, at this point, request that this be approved, and we will definitely go forth with and get it recorded within the time period requested.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a question from Ms. Dole.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the prior variance was authorized for approximately nine feet, and that now we're being requested for a 10.5-foot variance. So I wondered if, why there's a need for the 10.5-foot variance.
And to the, the way the property was built was, if you look on the Aswell survey, it's 9.5 foot from the building to the property line. And that, when it was completed, that's what came back, and that's why I adjusted that, based on the survey requirement. So when they, when Taylor Restoration went in and reconfigured that property, or rebuilt that property, those were the specific distances that was recorded, or that was brought in the Aswell survey, so I had no choice but to request it that way, ma'am.
Could you address why it turned out that the building wasn't, was built beyond what the board previously approved?
No, I don't have specific details on that. What I do know is, we gave the specific requirements to, Ms. Snyder gave the specific requirements to the contractors and Taylor Restoration. And at that point, it was supposed to be done, and we thought it was performed to that level. No Aswell survey was done immediately after that construction was done. So it wasn't done until two months ago, when we, when she brought this property to us, to sell it. And then we had an Aswell survey done, and that was when it depicted it was 9.5 feet. So I talked with Francis McGoughlin up at the muni, and asked him what specifically needed to be done, at that point, based on the construction of the building. Obviously, we gave them specific, Ms. Snyder gave them specific instructions to do it that way. I'm not sure why Taylor Restoration didn't adhere to those, that request. They just built it on, based on their designs at that point, which we had set 10 and 1/2 feet.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, this is really a question for Ms. O'Brien. Had the, had the documents been recorded at the time for the stipulations in the prior variance request, and a Aswell survey submitted that showed that it was built a foot and a half further into the, into the setback, what would have, what would have happened at that point?
Through the chair, Mr. Vig, well, clearly, the amount of variance that was allowed would have been exceeded, and the structure would not have been in conformance with what the zoning board at the time had approved. Having read through the first staff report, it was written for approval for an 11 and 1/2-foot encroachment. And the only thing I could figure out when I went through all of the documentation from the first, is that there was a diagram produced by Taylor Reconstruction, and they must have been doing their best estimate of what it would, what the dimension would be to try to make Ms. Snyder partially whole again. And they did produce a diagram that said nine feet. So I believe, I assumed that having seen that diagram that the Taylor Reconstruction had submitted with the application, the zoning board may have granted what the contractor said they could do. And apparently, the estimate may not have been, well, apparently it was not correct. It was hand-drawn, and so maybe it was the best estimate at the time, but the final construction exceeded what the best estimate was, is all I could think of. So now that it has been constructed, maybe it's not an unmixed evil that this happened to Ms. Snyder, in that she will be in conformance, depending on what action the zoning board takes tonight.
Thank you. My question was kind of a, one that might apply to any case where we grant a variance and we require that an Aswell is conducted, and what happens if, at that time, the construction exceeds what we grant as a board?
Through the chair, Mr. Vig, then, they would have, a petitioner in that situation would have to come back and ask for another variance to bring the new construction into compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant from border staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, sir. So the hearing shall be open to the public, or shall be open for public testimony. Each person testifying has three minutes, representatives of groups have five minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to testify? Seeing no one from the, seeing no one from the public that wishes to testify, we'll close the public hearing, public testimony. So now the matter rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board.
Mr. Chair, before the rest with the board, typically, the chair asks if the applicant wants to use any of their time for rebuttal.
Okay, my apologies. Did the applicant have anything else that he wanted to add for rebuttal? Okay, no. Seeing none, with no one wanting to testify as well from the public, looking for a positive motion. It's been moved by Mr. Ron, and seconded by Ms. Aker. Mr. Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case number 2015-0033, I move that the board grant a variance request from AMC 21.45.045G1 to allow a structure to encroach 2.10, 10.5 feet into the 20-foot primary front yard setback in the R2M district, in accordance with Department recommendations 1 and 2 on page seven of the staff packet.
Ms. Aker?
I support the motion. All right, I'm sorry, I second the motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll briefly speak to my motion.
Yes, please do.
I concur with staff's findings for standards 1 through 7, and incorporate them by references the basis for my findings of fact as well, and my intention to support this motion. I appreciate the discussion by Board Member Dole and Board Member Vig with respect to the difference between what it appears our prior board approved in 2005, and what we're now being asked to approve in 2015. Would like to draw the board's attention to a few key words, at least that I find key, in that the variance as granted was for an encroachment of approximately nine feet, on page 37, understanding that nine is different than the number we're looking at, but the wiggle room provided by approximately is of note, as well as on page 41 of the staff packet, halfway down the page, reference to page four of the petitioner's original application is a proposal that the new section of the building will encroach not more than 11 feet into the front yard setback, and I believe the variance request we're being asked to vote upon meets those, those standards. For those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The motion passes by a vote of six with two abstentions. Six, four, zero, nay, two abstentions. Six, four, zero, nay, two abstentions. So every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of decision to file an appeal with the Superior With that, we'll move on to...
I'd like to thank all of you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next case, case number 2015-0031 by petitioner Amy M. Mestas. Can staff please present the sufficiency of notice?
Yes, there were 53 public hearing notices mailed on April 23, and we did not receive any comments back. And, yes, no comments back from the public.
Can staff present the case, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The petitioner requests a variance from AMC 21.40.030G, which is for minimum yard requirements, to allow the second-floor bumpout of the residence to encroach 2.3 feet into the front yard setback. The ASBIL survey indicates that the second-floor overhang projects 2.3 feet into the front yard setback. Standard number one is not met. There are no exceptional physical circumstances of the land that warrant the granting of a variance. The lot is not affected by slopes, streams, or wetlands. The lot is served by public water and sewer. The lot is pie-shaped, but has a similar lot size as other lots in the neighborhood. The lot is more than twice the size of the minimum lot area in the zoning district, and the plot plan submitted with the building permit application and approved by the zoning plan reviewer shows that the house fits easily within the buildable area outside the setbacks. Standard two, the standard is not met. There are no physical circumstances of the land contributing to the need for a variance. The petitioner's narrative notes that the house was accidentally located too close to the property boundary. The variance request appears to be a matter of inconvenience. As the petitioner's narrative states, it would create a substantial burden to have to remove the upper corner of our house to be in compliance. The need for the variance is a result of an error made when surveying the location and construction of the home. The need for a variance is self-imposed. Standard four, the standard is substantially met. Given the character of the neighborhood, the 2.3-foot encroachment into the 20-foot setback will not likely adversely impact adjacent properties. Standard five, the standard is met. The requested variance for the front yard setback would not change the character of the zoning district. The R1 district is intended as urban and suburban, single-family residential areas with low population densities. If the variance is granted, it would not allow use, not permitted in the district. Standard six, the standard is met. No adverse effects are anticipated if the variance is approved. Standard seven, the standard is substantially met. The only conforming alternative available to the petitioner is to remove a portion of the second-floor overhang. This modification can be done to the house while still making a reasonable use of the The division finds that standards 1, 2, and 3 are not substantially met, and therefore
Anything else from staff?
No, I have nothing else.
Are there any questions to staff from the board? If not, would the applicant please step forward? And please state your full name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Amy K. Mestas, and my last name is spelled M-E-S-T-A-S.
Okay, you have 10 minutes.
Am I able to use the, to show some photos, use this?
Yes.
Does it work? How do I, are you seeing it, or?
No, there should be a button on the side.
No, sorry. I'll put it down. Oh, can't really see it. Is that how it works? I guess maybe it's not working. I think you have good... Well, hopefully it will help.
We can see it. We also have, I think, something very similar to that in our packet.
Yeah, you do have similar things. I just kind of highlighted some things. So thank you for taking the time to hear our request. We're a young couple, starting out with a new family, and we decided to build a home here in our Anchorage community where we both grew up, and we're excited to be raising our children in the same area. I wanted to start by talking about some of the circumstances that led to the variance problem. During the planning process, you have one of these in your packets that shows where we intended to place the home. Once the lot was cleared, we went back out to the property, and we're looking at where the house was going to be placed. And at that time, we noted that the curve of the road was, it would be very difficult to see around the curve of the road when we were trying to back out of the property. So the decision that we made was to make the driveway area larger. So here's the final. This is what we did at that time. I kind of have it boxed, if you can see that. We decided to make that driveway area larger so that we would be able to pull back out of our garage, turn around, and be entering the street forward, so there'd be less issues with our safety backing out of our driveway, as well as others on the road, especially in the winter months when it's icy and people do take that curve much too fast. So with wanting to keep some distance on the side of the house, we went ahead and moved it a little bit forward, what we thought was a little bit forward. We measured back from the stake of our setback, and we thought we had plenty of room. There was also, I brought a picture that I don't think you're going to be able to see, that kind of shows the original slope of the lot. It was much less severe than the final grading. So here's a, I'll put another one up. I don't know how well you can see it, but this shows, yeah, it doesn't show it very well, but the slope at the front of the yard was increased quite a bit. And then when our ASBIL survey went out, when all was said and done, the overhang of the house encroached, the corner encroached on our setback requirement. It was certain, there was certainly no intent to be out of our zoning area, but unfortunately and regrettably, we are. So the mistake was unintentional, and I was thinking a lot today about how I could show you rather than just tell you that it was unintentional, excuse me. And so I thought I could perhaps illustrate some of the things that we did in the process of designing our home that are a benefit to our community. And those things include building a 5-star-plus home, including in-floor heat and a high-efficiency boiler. We also provided underground utilities from the back of our home instead of just running our power and telecom lines overhead, which we could have done. And now our neighbors who have backing lots will be able to use that underground line for their power and telecom needs. We decided we'd put the garage on the back of the lot in order to keep our neighborhood aesthetically pleasing and keep the parking off of the street on that curve, so that when we had gatherings at our home, people would be able to park off of the road and off of that curve. We also connected up our French drain system to the storm drain so that there wouldn't be any possible glaciation issues coming down onto the public roadway. In regards to the standards and our not meeting the standards, I do believe our lot to be unique in our neighborhood, and I believe that's part of the reason why it hasn't been developed, as the rest of the neighborhood has been developed, in that backing onto that road from our lot is a little bit on the dangerous side. And part of the reason we put the driveway on the side that we did was discussions with planners of the best way to deal with that situation. And the shape of the lot did drive that decision a lot. And I really do feel it's a unique situation, as well as the slope changing from looking at the lot to the final ASBIL. Standards 2 and 3, on it being a hardship to the owner and not just an inconvenience, Our construction loan on our property will end on June 15. And then, I'm not exactly sure what we're going to do financially. We have to go back in and change our property before we're able to get our CCO. So it will be a substantial burden, excuse me. If we have to deconstruct the corner of our home, that will entail not only just taking the corner of the home off, but getting into our in-floor radiant heat system on the second floor, dealing with the load-bearing wall issues and the roof lines. I apologize for the tears. And it will be a substantial financial hardship for our family to make that happen, especially not knowing the loan situation for trying to extend that construction loan. It also discusses having rights enjoyed by other property owners in the district. There are many homes in our neighborhood that are closer to the road, seeing as this is an older neighborhood, and I understand that that is because they were not under the same zoning criteria as us. But I do believe that we're not getting a benefit that is not enjoyed by the rest of our neighbors, and in discussions with them, they also believe that. Also, to come in compliance, I don't believe it would serve our community in any way to deconstruct a portion of our home and rebuild with just a corner of the home removed. I don't think it would really help anyone. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm sorry for the waterworks. And I sincerely hope you will consider granting our variance request. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the border staff or the applicant? No questions? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Mestas, thank you for your presentation. Are you aware of any other pie-shaped lots in your neighborhood? I'm looking in the staff packet. We have a few wider-scale figures on page 7 and 8, and by golly, yours is the only one that I see.
Yes, it is the only pie-shaped. There are some what you could consider a corner lot in our neighborhood, but it's the only pie-shaped lot.
Mr. Ron again?
I pressed the wrong button, Mr. Ron.
Any other questions from the border staff? Ms. Dole?
You mentioned that the topography changed and that initially it was flatter. I wasn't sure if you were trying to suggest that the distance became shorter or anything as because the topography got steeper.
No. I was mainly, when we went out there and looked at where we were going to place the corner in regards to where the setback line was, I just think that somewhere in the change in grading from the contractor's end, that they didn't put the corner of the house where it was intended to be when they did that regrading of the site, because we went and located those corners prior to that final grading.
No further questions for me.
Any other questions from the border staff? Seeing none, thank you. So we'll open the hearing for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. Representatives of groups have five minutes. Actually, no, I'm sorry, excuse me. You have 2 minutes and 19 seconds left, man. Did you have any rebuttal?
No.
No? Okay, so we'll open it for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to testify? Seeing no one, we'll close public testimony. The matter now rests with the board and asks for a positive motion. Mr. Vig moves?
Mr. Chairman, in case number 2015-0031, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.40.030G.1 to allow residents to encroach 2.3 feet into the front yard setback, subject to conditions 1 and 2 on page 5 of the staff packet.
Ms. Iker seconded.
I do.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Ron's question about pie-shaped lots in the neighborhood, I was, went through a quick process of looking at the portions of the zoning map on page 7 of the staff packet, and there aren't any in the immediate area, but I did count, I think, a total of four lots that come to a single point as opposed to being a trapezoidal shape, of which there are quite a number. And I estimated that there's at least 100 to 120 lots. So in my view, the very small number of those pie-shaped lots out of the greater proportion is a factor that I consider to be somewhat exceptional on its own. And add to that the fact that this lot is located dead in the middle of a horizontal curve of the roadway is a second factor. And the third factor that I consider somewhat exceptional is the slope of the lot immediately behind the sidewalk leading up to the lot. So... So, in my view, there are some physical circumstances that seem to be quite unique to this lot that are not common in other lots in the district. And I believe that they rise to the level of being exceptional and somewhat dictate the ability to construct a house on the lot. So I believe that the standard is met. Standard number two, physical circumstances that I just described, where the code would be strictly applied, I believe would have an undue hardship on the property owner. We heard testimony about load-bearing walls and structural requirements for supporting the upper level of the home, along with the fact that the floor is gipcrete with in-floor radiant heat, which is not, it's no small matter to remove a part of that floor and repair that heating system. I believe that standard two is met for those reasons. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. You know, the applicant did plan the home, locate where they believed the corner would be best suited on the lot that was outside of the setback. And it does seem that there is some actions that were done by the applicant that led to this occurring. I do believe, however, that the contractor and surveyor played some role in how the lot was developed and the home was constructed. We heard the applicant describe how the topography changed and perhaps affected where the corner was located on the lot, the stake was located, I should say. So it's a little more difficult for me on this one, but I think the applicant made a very, a good effort to comply. And I'd like to hear other board members' thoughts on this subject, but I'm thinking that there are other factors involved here. I'll just quickly run through the other standards. I agree with staff's findings that standard four is met. Granting this variance would not affect adjacent properties, adversely affect them, I should say. Standard five, the variance granted is in keeping with the intent of this code will not change the character of the zoning district. I agree with the staff's findings on that matter. Standard six, the variance granted does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. I agree with staff on that, that it is, the standard is met. Standard seven, variance is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. I believe that the standard is substantially met, as staff said in their packet. And I think a mitigating factor, if you want to consider it to be that, is the fact that it's a very small triangular-shaped encroachment and not the full width of the home. And so in terms of square footage, I believe that the number of square feet that actually encroaches into the setback is very small, certainly less than 10 square feet, which I consider to be very minimal. So I believe that standards one, two are met, and possibly three. And I agree with staff that standards four through seven are met. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Ms. Iker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the comments of Mr. Vig. I similarly found great value in petitioner's testimony in their approach to building the home and the consideration that went with the design and fitting into the community in consideration for the neighbors. It was very apparent to me that it was a very thoughtful approach and the resulting construction, or the construction that resulted in this variance request today was not, it was absolutely inadvertent and not a result of the petitioner not being careful and thoughtful in approaching the construction of their home. I find 2.3 feet pretty de minimis when the petitioner overcame so many challenges of having the pie-shaped lot, the careful planning with the driveway so as not to have a trafficked impact, and having the slope and making good use of the land. So for, I'll speak to item number three in, with particular, the, I just want to note that the petitioner themselves did not construct their own home. Petitioner hired professionals and relied on those professionals, presumably with building plans. And it was for the mistake of others, not self-imposed by the petitioner, that they find themselves here today. And for that reason, I find standard number three met. But I concur with the balance of Mr. Vig's comments, and I plan on supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with Board Member Vig and Iker's findings. I do intend to support the motion. I do have a few quick comments. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that after further review of page seven, I did find one other pie-shaped lot. Puzzling with my daughters at home has skewed my vision a little bit. On the west side of Lakeside Drive, on the south side of Lot, so perhaps those are mirror images of each other. That said, two out of the total is still, in my mind and in support of my argument, an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance, especially in consideration of the additional elements that Board Member Vig pointed out affecting the lot with respect to its position at the curve and topography. Board Member Iker, while I appreciate your argument with respect to entrusting and hiring the work of professionals, I do see that the petitioner did stamp the plans. And I guess I can't fully commit to an argument that absolves the petitioner for some culpability with respect to the diligence necessary to measure twice and cut once, if you will. Harkening back to the arguments of where's the harm, I think that the care that the petitioners have spoken to with respect to how they designed their house weighs heavily in my decision. By its nature, any home designed but a pie-shaped home is incongruent with at least one side of this lot, if that makes any sense. I wouldn't want to live in a pie-shaped home. So, I'll stop talking and say that I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
I agree with the petitioners, or with the petitioners, with the board members that have gone before me, and just want to speak a little bit to standard number three. Down toward the end of the staff's analysis, it says that courts across the country have agreed that a self-imposed hardship by the owner which is unrelated to the physical characteristics of the land. And I think that the position of the house is definitely related to the physical characteristics of the land, particularly the curb, as well as the pie-shaped lot, and being able to exit the property in a safe manner. And with that, I am going to be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Doe.
I also intend to support the motion and appreciate the comments of my fellow board members, but in particular, your, the most recent comments of Ms. McKay, because to me, that, the one element that I struggled the most with was element three, and that's because this is coming to us after the fact, as opposed to before the fact. There's no doubt in my mind that if this variance request had been requested, and before the house was built with the reasons given tonight in terms of the curb and the safety and the pie-shaped nature of the lot, that we would have approved the variance. But where I struggle is when someone does something and then tries, and affirmatively builds a house and then tries to beg forgiveness for a problem later. But I was convinced by Ms. McKay's comments as to the, basically, the curb in the road and it being tied to the physical elements for it in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have one other comment that I wanted to talk about for the record, and I think it's important. And direct your attention to page 43 of the staff packet. It's the memorandum from Traffic Division where they reviewed the variance request and had no comment. And the reason I mention it is because of the fact of the horizontal curve of the street and were the variance to be of a significant amount that would impair the site distance around that curve. Traffic engineering would have alerted us to that, and they have no such concern about it. And I think it's another reason to support granting the variance.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The motion carries with six yays, zero nays, and two abstentions, or excuse me, two absents. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, in that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with the
Thank you very much.
So we'll move on to item H3, case 2015-0038. Petitioner Anastasio Paños.
Yes.
Will staff please read the sufficiency of notice?
Excuse me. There were 224 public hearing notices mailed on April 22nd. We did not receive any comments back.
Will staff please present, please present the case?
Thank you. The petitioner requests a variance from AMC 2140060G for minimum yard requirements to allow a new residence to encroach two feet into the east side yard setback and two feet into the west yard setback. Standard number one, the standard is met. The extreme narrowness of the subject property is an exceptional circumstance which warrants an exception from the minimum setback requirements of code. While there are a few other remnant parcels and undersized lots in this neighborhood, most of them are either too small to be buildable or are much closer to be in a standard lot size. Standard two, the standard is met. Strict application of the required minimum setbacks would limit the petitioner to a 16-foot wide house. In trying to create the option for narrow lot housing in the new Title 21, staff created a minimum lot width of 30 feet so that the houses could be at least 20 feet wide. The vast majority of property owners in the R4 district who desire to build a single-family home could enjoy a 40-foot wide home on a 50-foot wide conforming lot. Standard three, the standard is met. While the property owner did choose to purchase this lot and was perfectly knowledgeable of its dimensions, he was not responsible for plating the lot in 1959. The lot dimensions are independent of any actions of the petitioner. Standard four, the standard can be met with conditions. The lot to the west contains a U-shaped apartment building with 16 units. Rebuilding a single-story structure at the same distance from the west property boundary will not significantly change the impact on neighbors to the west. To the east is a single-family residence. Having a new structure much closer to the lot line than the existing structure will have an effect on this neighbor. Ensuring that the new structure is a single-story structure will help to mitigate the impact. The petitioner has committed that roof eaves will not extend beyond the allowed variance. Standard five, the standard is met. The requested variance for the side yard setback would not change the character of the zoning district. Standard seven, the standard is substantially met. The applicant has requested the variance to accommodate a 20-foot wide home, which is considered the narrowest narrow lot housing option in the new Title 21. While he could build a 16-foot wide home, a 20-foot home is reasonable for such a skinny lot. The Division finds that all standards are substantially met and therefore recommends approval of the variance.
Are there any questions to staff from the board? No questions? Will the applicant, please step forward, state your full name and spell your last name for the record, please?
Juanos Anastasio, A-N-A-S-T-A-S-I-O-U.
Okay, you have 10 minutes to present your case.
Yes. I purchased this lot mainly because of my dogs. They kind of forced me to. And albeit, the home on there now is only 300 square feet, and deciding to purchase a lot, I saw that it had potential. And since the purchase of the lot, I've been doing nothing but upgrades to it. Probably removed as much as 2,000 pounds of trash and junk that was on that yard. I also removed a Conex trailer that was on there about six weeks ago, as mentioned on page five. And also, I was, because of the home, existing home being, not being on a foundation, I was compelled to pay cash for the lot. So it did take a financial hit on me in that regard. In my application to the board, I have stated that the roofies will not encroach past the two-foot variance that I requested. And I also believe you have a letter there from Mr. Tyson, who owns the 16 units on the right side of my complex, where he doesn't object to my two-foot variance. In fact, the home that's on there now, that was built neons ago, is on a three-foot setback from his side. And I don't believe there's any record of any complaints about that. And I don't know if it's because it's been, was grandfathered in or what, but as I say, I plan to make this a nice home for myself and my dogs. I plan to make this a nice home for myself and my dogs and to actually beautify the neighborhood. And my intentions are nothing less than that. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify something that Panos had just stated. There was a neighbor, the owner of the multifamily housing unit, he had submitted a letter of no objection to the request, but then he called me and asked me to remove that letter from the packet, so I removed it. That's why, if you're leafing through it, you don't see it in there.
If I, if, can I answer to that effect?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, she is correct. After he signed the letter stating he had no objections to it, two days later, he saw me in the yard and he approached me and he said that he was going to take that, his objection back. And I said, well, I asked him why. I said, I've already turned over the letter to the planning zone, and he said that because of my dogs. And I said, well, you know, it doesn't make a difference if I build sixteen feet wide or twenty feet wide. My dogs aren't going anywhere. I'm still going to build a home here. So, and I think that for you to use my dogs is an excuse now to track, retract, I think it's pretty, pretty despicable. Thank you.
Are there any questions from staff or the board to the petitioner? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. So, I understand you did remove the Conex that's referred to in the packet?
Yes, I did.
And the five conditions of approval that are on page five at the bottom, you're prepared to accept those?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. Two of them, two of them, one, like, the Conex has already been removed, the number one, where it says that I will not build past the eaves. I've already given you that assurance. And the other three, we'll comply with also.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferguson?
I just wanted to confirm with Panos, so there's a shed there also. Is the shed still on the site?
It's, it's not really a shed, it's made out of wood. It's still on there, and it's three feet back from the, from the setback from the back of the lot, yes.
Okay, okay. So, I just wanted to be clear that.
Yes, that's a, it's a very nice, that's the only thing decent to be on that property.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff or the board? Ms. Dole?
Looking at the conditions on the variance, sorry, looking at the conditions on the variance, number one speaks to an ASVILT survey dated three, four, or fifteen, prepared by Fred Wallaka. And I just wanted to ask you to look at it, I think, and first say if it's the one on page twenty of the packet and.
Excuse me, I didn't bring my packet with me. Are you, are you talking about the Conex still?
No, I'm not about the.
Does staff have an extra packet?
I just want to make sure that our, we incorporate that recommendation, that that is what your proposal is.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I planned, excuse me, I planned to come back where the existing structure is now. I plan to start five feet from the end, from the back of the existing structure, and go forty feet back and twenty feet wide. The existing structure will be torn down, it will be part yard, and the rest will be carpet.
But all the other setbacks, the side and front and off the eaves?
Yes, the sides will be, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just wanted to ask because, you know, plans change, and we saw in the last case where plans changed.
No, no, you have my word, it won't change.
Okay.
Any other questions from staff or the board? Seeing none, we'll open it for public testimony. Seeing no one else here, we'll close the public testimony. The matter now rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from Ms. McKay?
In case 2015-0038, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 211501OB, subject to the five conditions on page five of the packet.
Anyone willing to second that? Ms. Iker?
I'd be happy to second the motion, but I think that we are requesting a variance from AMC 214006OG2.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that your motion, Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. McKay, seconded by Ms. Iker. Ms. McKay, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm going to support the motion and incorporate those staff's findings that the, that the standards have been met or substantially met in, for all seven. This is, this is a very, very skinny lot.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Mr. Vig?
I don't remember for certain, other than the one letter that Ms. Ferguson referred to that was asked to be withdrawn by the, by the writer, but there was a public comment on page thirty-five from Lottie Michael in support of the request, and like I say, I may, might have missed, missed that during Ms. Ferguson's presentation, but she does support granting the variance. She's in the neighborhood, apparently, or owns property in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The motion carries six yeas, zero nays, two absents. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is the final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with the Superior Court.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the annual election of officers. So, there's three positions, chair, vice chair, parliamentarian. Is that something that the board wishes to take up at this point in time? If so, I guess I'll open the, I'll open the, open it for nominations for chair. Mr. Ron?
I nominate Board Member Cars to serve as chair.
Do you accept that nomination? Oh, sorry.
I'll add commentary for the record. I believe he provided email confirmation that he would be willing to serve in a board, board chair capacity. Please speak up if I misinterpreted the email that I read.
Thanks. Is there any other nominations? If not, is there a motion to elect Mr. Cars as chair with unanimous consent? It's been moved by Mr. Ron, seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Well, I guess there's no discussion on that. The, Mr. Cars is elected chair, vice chair. I think I've told everyone I'm planning on vacating, so I don't know if there's any issue with me conducting this portion, but I guess I'll open the, I'll open it for nominations Mr. Ron?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Board Member McKay as vice chair. And I was only struggling over, not Ms. McKay, but how to present my suggestion to nominate her. She has my full support.
You accept, Ms. McKay? Any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a motion to elect Ms. McKay with unanimous consent? Been moved by Mr. Ron, seconded by, was it Ms. Iker? Ms. Iker, please vote. Ms. McKay is elected vice chair. Open the floor for parliamentarian nominations. Mr. Ron?
Mr. Vig or Ms. Dole or some other board member? I think I've nominated enough people.
Mr. Vig?
I nominate Stephanie Iker for parliamentarian.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a motion to elect Ms. Iker as parliamentarian? Looks like Ms. Dole has moved and Ms. McKay has seconded.
Can we get confirmation from Board Member Dole that that was in fact her motion or Mr. Vig's?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Iker is parliamentarian again. Item I, one, reports, I don't think there's any reports, are there? Board member comments? Mr., Mr. Ron, is it? No?
Thank you, Mr. Hart, for stepping in as chair. Nicely done tonight, and sad to hear you're going. Hopefully, we'll get a few more meetings out of you.
Yeah, thanks. Any other board member comments?
I have a comment or a question for staff. We have this page on, on the, on the counter that says that we're not going to have a meeting in July. Is that true?
Thank you, through the chair. That's not a guarantee, but as, as of now, we do not have any cases for July.
Okay. I just want to let you know that I won't be here in July, so.
Thank you.
In case there is one, I won't be here.
Thank you.
Mr. Vig, did you have a comment?
I was just going to mention that appreciated serving on the board with you, Mr. Hart. Did I understand correctly that you're intending to stand down from the board, just as a, as a vice chair?
No, I believe my term is up in October, I think it is, so I'll still be here for a few more meetings. Ms. Dole?
Well, I, I also thank you, but I had a question about, for staff, because I was looking at the page on our, that was here too, and it had a, even though it says no new hearing, no new cases submitted, there's a hearing date of July nine fifteen for the one on the bottom, and I guess I just wanted to confirm the earlier comments that there was no hearing in July. This ZBAA page that was left.
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Dole, that's what Ms. McKay was just discussing, there are no, it's no guarantee, but there, as of now, there are no July cases to be heard.
So, the one that says hearing date, July nine fifteen, is not?
That's just to bring your attention to, that's July ninth hearing date, but no cases have been submitted yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Now, is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Dole has moved to adjourn, Mr. Vig has seconded. We stand adjourned.